All right, council, we uh I will go ahead and talk about the meeting workshop for October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four. Uh to our council member uh. Stoker was gonna be a little bit late this evening, had another appointment prior to this meeting. I'll as well ask Steph if she'd go ahead and uh. All the role.
Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Brendan.
Here.
David Feta.
Here.
Mayhais. Kate Brand present. And Smart. Ken Stoker, as he said, notified us that you'd be late.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you, council, for taking your time out here on Tuesday to come sit and uh. Listen to this presentation that we have for you prepared with uh. Uh city staff, uh finance department directors, everybody's been working due diligence to create this document. Uh so what we'll do is I'll go ahead and turn it over to uh to Aaron.
You wanna read your proposal?
I'd like to do that. I was waiting for all.
People's name?
Yeah.
Um so. There's a book like this, the one I did before. Uh they had a very important trying to show uh some requested uh by themselves and first is what. Uh it being proposed by the mayor and he's like that's the important factor in terms of. It's maybe the good one, it's in the general fund. Uh and now uh the page thirteen, seventeen. Uh. Yeah, fourteen and fifteen, this what was requested with that. Uh you can see there's one thing in there that got included and we had one thing get adjusted. Everything else was uh not uh funded. And then if you look at the new positions on the next page, and the point is. All these positions were requested, some of them were rejected than the previous budget title as well. Again, uh we have one kind of um partially funded and we. Were able to fund it, it's key funds, and that was a temporary position to begin with. Uh but come forth, that was an important part of. Um the ground that we've made in the last, I guess, year and a half related on um inside of things. So that one did stay, but other than that, that is it for the general fund that is coming in. So that's gonna be the big part of our discussion tonight.
So with that, I will uh touch the the high level, we'll get into a little bit deeper, but uh. I'd like to read to citizens as well as our esteemed city council members. Uh the mayor's proposed budget uh statement. We are pleased to present the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six proposed biennial budget for the city of West Richland. The city uses a biennial budget to account for revenues and expenditures. One of my duties as the mayor is to propose and ultimately produce a budget that is balanced within a visible reason. Good stewardship of public funds is one of the most important responsibilities vested upon public officials. In accordance with our city's financial management policy, this budget looks not only at the next biennium, but also projects further out through the biennium of two thousand twenty nine to two thousand thirty. As you look ahead, we will continue to focus on programs and services that connect the community, enhance livability and promote an environmentally sustainable city. Staff and I will continue to seek funding opportunities to maintain these attributes the city of West Richland citizens expect. This ensures that both short and long term impacts of the discuss decisions made in the two thousand twenty five and two thousand twenty six biennium can be carried into the future. The city of West Richland produced significant achievements in two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four biennium. The city invested in the city's personnel to better retain and recruit knowledgeable and experienced employees. This is particularly important for a small number of staff we have in the city, currently eighty five full time employees. We have made extensive investments, infrastructure for current and new capital. Some of these projects include the drilling of two new wells, the bombing range, Keen Road intersection modification project. The state route two twenty four Red Mountain interchange. The improvements to our school safety zones. The two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty four was the first full biennium with a standalone parks division within public works maintenance. This division was able to focus on deferred maintenance with small amounts of fund that was dedicated. To open spaces, trails, ADA accessibility, sports fields, recreation and parks and playgrounds. As we conclude the end of the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four biennium, West Richland remains in an adequate financial position, but is facing several funding challenges. Initially, the department approached creation's request in the general fund exceeded exceeded projection resources by over eleven million. With an additional two million from the street fund. This amount increased from the six million gap we experienced in the creation of the previous budget. The funding problems continue to compound in future biennium. To balance the proposed budget for this biennium, most requested and needed position to maintain city level of services were eliminated. As they were in the previous budget. In addition, requests for supplies, services, maintenance and capital outlet were also. Through teamwork, cooperation and strategic thinking, we were able to balance the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six budget. For all funds, but we will need to modify the general fund reserve requirement outlining the current financial management policy. As well as the reduction in service and service levels in some areas, particularly the street fund. In response to city council and staff priorities, the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six proposed budget was primary focused. On maintaining basic service levels in order to address several of the challenges that the city is currently experiencing. It was imperative that adjustments were made due to current economy, inflation, security risk and overall growth for cities. These factors are a direct impact on personnel retention and recruitment, infrastructure construction and maintenance and cybersecurity. Based on these priorities, the following decisions on programs and services were made in this proposed budget. Investing additional resources in all general operation expenditures due to inflation. Continuing to invest in the city's current future 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 personnel to better retain and recruit knowledgeable and experienced employees. Extensive investments to infrastructure maintenance and capital project. Secure additional funding, resources and new capital infrastructure construction project. And invest in information technology and boost cybersecurity. The two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six proposed budget includes numerous capital projects. We will continue to make progress in meeting and enhance capital investment meetings. Current projects that will extend to the next biennium include water infrastructure, well number two and well number three. As well as sewer infrastructure updates, so as lift station and flood mitigation at the treatment plant. The city also extends transportation improvement projects for S R two twenty four Red Mountain and Keen Road Path. As we look ahead in the next biennium for future years, city of West Richland is expected to have tremendous residential and commercial growth. The Lewis and Park suburb area plan is expected to create a minimum of two thousand new residential units. Including a commercial area equivalent with Queens Gate area location in Richmond. Several new commercial developments are also underway. Brothers, Benton County Conservation District, a new daycare facility, Frank and Son Auto Body, Lamar Business Mall. And additionally, as we all know, Benton R A Electrical Association, who will relocate their main office from Proster to West Richland. And as we all experienced, a great day out there, we had a groundbreaking walkway near the police facility. This proposed budget is designed to continue essential municipal services for a growing community and address the city council priorities. The budget that we have drafted represents a finely tuned plan which meets the city's service needs. Budget will also will allow us to provide a basic level of services for all West Richland stakeholders. West Richland is a vibrant, exciting and beautiful place to live and work. From our volunteers on various commissions and boards, to people who help with our outstanding community events and our service organizations. A special thanks to all our employees, department directors, who contribute. Contribution of their time and efforts to assist in the development of the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six proposed budget. Budget preparation and team effort requires coordination and compromise to develop. A balanced budget provides significant resources for service delivery at the highest level possible. Department directors work creatively and due diligently as a team to accomplish these goals to set. Thank you, city council, for their continued support in making West Richland a financially stable and well balanced community. Your dedication to establishing public policy goals and priorities have provided the foundation for this budget. Respectfully, Brent Gary, yeah. So while I said all of this neat stuff here, we've got a lot of work yet to do for the future as well as working through this budget cycle. Uh it was not an easy task, uh but it was through the dedication commitment of of all senior staffers. Uh to come to Aaron and myself and work through what they can do in their departments. To minimize the negative impact of the the economy, inflation, uh just. Uh so many things that we've all noted and talked about in the past or last workshop. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it back over to Aaron and we will continue going through things and answer questions and have discussion. Go.
So a couple of things, I mentioned about a couple of key dates to start. Um so next week, the hundred fifth is gonna be our first public hearing on the budget. So I would encourage all of you to uh invade and please let me know if you have any questions. Um happily answer any, um if I don't know it off the top of my head, I'll research it with the department that has requested it. Um another thing that we'll be talking about is uh the policy change uh that Brett brought up. This does require uh reducing reserve balance uh for general fund. Uh it's currently set at twenty two percent of this budget, uh pushing it down to nineteen and a half percent. So there'll be further discussion on that. Um I'll probably talk about it in a committee first, but that will be coming down. Um another thing in here is uh the personnel. Uh we did start with uh last budget cycle, I remind you, we did bring up uh people's wages to become be competitive. Um. It was over a two year period to kind of bring people up and we knew it was sustainable, this one brings it down. We initially were shooting for five percent, uh didn't make it, it's coming down to the maximum of four percent um per. Uh for an employee wage, uh there's a formula in here uh regarding how that's calculated. Um part of it is poll debate and then part of it is um paper performance. Um and there's a little bit of the formula and a highlight of the change. Again, we'll get into that further since it really required. A personnel policy update as well as adopting a new uh. Uh help. If anybody have a question.
Yeah, so what uh what I'd like to do is is turn the floor, Mayor Phil Tenbrink. Um I I asked him to come and then sit through this process to see how uh we worked. Uh as a team, uh senior staff and and senior staff management. Uh and for him to also be a little bit of a spokesman for his peers, being a policymaker that he is. Uh he also had some some very good ideas and input, which I much appreciated. Uh I think it was probably from the expertise he's learned as a commissioner of Benton Board. I can imagine that's probably really well over the background of that. But uh with that, if you have any comments, Mayor Phil Tenbrink, I'd be more than happy to open the floor to you and share with you a little bit of what you learned and and during this process.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um as I've mentioned before, I had the privilege of sitting through all of the staff budget discussion, senior staff. All the individuals that you sit down and roll here, uh and it was very enlightening in many regards. I think one of the topics we brought up, Aaron has already touched on, that is reducing the reserve from twenty two percent to nineteen point five percent. I think I brought that up for discussion at one meeting because of the shortfall and our inability to fund everything that's asked for on these pages. Not that everything is urgent this year, but it is urgent over the long term. But some of the things that by reducing the reserve, it gives us one time funds that we can use for entry into F Y twenty five, F Y twenty six. But it is not sustainable, is not sustainable. So I would ask my fellow council members, as this matter comes up for discussion, it's absolutely important. That we move forward with that initiative from the standpoint of being able to do some of the basics. Being able to get an I P uh assistance through contract work, being able to keep our uh. Animal, excuse me, code enforcement laws and some of the other changes, being able to make funds available for the street fund. But the deficit deficit um in terms of what the city needs and what the city has as far as resources. Well, as we go forward, once again, as I mentioned earlier, in another meeting, I think we need to look at ways to increase the revenue that's available to our general fund as well. And that will be discussion that we have to take up after the budget is passed. So is my opening comments, um I'll be happy to shed my perspective as we go through discussions, if it's if it's uh wanted.
Right, thank you, thank you, Mayor Phil Tenbrink, appreciate it. So open up the floor, questions, comments, or anything else that might be allowed, Roscoe, Eric, Chief. I mean, y'all, you threw everybody, everybody threw their hat in the rain and sometimes it was, see what was in the hat.
Yeah, so uh just then for broad dollar purposes, what is the two and a half percent increase?
Uh it's about, it's changing, it's about two hundred and sixty thousand uh. And I remember the.
Two and a half percent in the.
Understood, yeah.
Real.
I think when Aaron and I talked about it, it was about a quarter million.
I think one of the important things in here, and when we talk about the cuts that we had to make, the thirteen million dollars. That's really, when you look at our overall budget, I can't remember the the dollar, no, one hundred eighteen million, one hundred twenty million, something like that. Um and you're like, oh, well, thirteen million is much, but I I want to reiterate that we're only talking about the general fund. When we're talking about these cuts, the general fund is housing the backbone of your city. So it's what keeps your city glued together. These other funds, like you've got your utility funds, they have their own source of revenue. There's rules that restrict us from using those to support the general fund in any way. So when we talk about budget, a lot of times we talk about big budgets, but it's really capital driven, it's really utility driven. But today, in kind of this focus we started on our last council workshop, is to focus on the general fund. Like, this is where your meat of government is, and this is what is breaking. And and we cannot continue down this path. You look at your street fund, so that's kind of the other caveat, the free fund is another governmental fund. The amount of cuts that came out of that, um the reduction of service level is going to go down very significantly. Um especially in terms of snow events. Um we did remove all uh uh extra contract help. Um usually we have in the budget kind of set aside in case to get some big thunderstorm. And they come in and uh help plow us out. Uh that's gone, uh so there will be no intensity with that. They've asked for dump trucks, uh fill clouds for several years now, we can't afford to get them. Um they're operating with old equipment, the maintenance guys are holding them together, I mean, they're doing what they can. Um so that's really what the meat and the bone of this budget is about.
I I will say in regards to the equipment in which our our staff uses, they do go through a D O T required inspection to certify. So there there's no, there's no unsafe equipment being operated.
Repair bills are getting made now.
Do you think it pays a repair bill that it is like?
Well, just to be clear, we talk D U T inspection, what is the minimal thing to make a legal on the road? Contracts of. And things that need to be done, that was just to make it be a free legal. So you've got five old dump trucks that may or may not.
So kind of a unique thing we did uh this year, which I don't like to do in the budget, especially in the street farms because uh. Last year, I think I missed the portion before, but the last biennium of the eight hundred fifty thousand to balance it, this uh. So eight hundred fifty thousand dollars of general fund money to go to the street fund uh in this biennium with these conditions. It's not very realistic, so that's why we're shaving that street fund uh balance down so much. And then primary source of revenue in there is your gas tax. Gas tax has been flat or barely uh going up uh year over year. Uh we're not getting a lot, that's a primary source. Um. The other thing of that is kind of on the inflation side of things, like yeah, we get a little increase in the revenue, but I've been talking, I told a story a couple of times. It I talked to a supervisor last week and he said, I just got a truck full of salt. He said, two years ago, three years ago, it was three thousand dollars for this truck. He said, this year I just paid fifty six hundred dollars. So we talked about supplies in here, these supplies are the things that we're needing to do our jobs and not even extra. Um things, like basic things that let us do our jobs.
Can you have a rough number, what what the. Take what's for gas tanks for West Richland, I mean.
Three hundred and thirty.
Yeah.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
A year. Then you got another ninety thousand in. Internal, one percent internal tax on water.
Mm-hmm.
It's baked in. Four hundred forty doesn't do much when you're looking at a. Air bones, million dollar a year. So if there is.
When you have a dump truck that costs three hundred thousand.
Three thirty, so bottom line, you're seeing, you're gonna see level of service increase in snow, unless it doesn't snow, but we don't get. I mean.
And in a lot of words, that level, I just comes to play is is we would plow through the entire storm to keep ahead of the game. Our sister cities don't do that, and that's what we're gonna be waiting for, the snow is done, then we'll go out and we'll we'll open the job. We won't be based in the whole time.
So that whole thing I'm gonna have to rework because no longer we're gonna be able to put the ice around us. As many places, um we do a lot of residential heels and stuff, so we're all gonna not get treated. It's simply got it and we'll have to double. Think whether we're gonna send people out in the middle of the night on overtime or just wait till the morning and send them out. So. Yeah, Aaron talked about the cushion we had, we spent fifty thousand a year to call a contractor and to dig us out. And it's not been too many years ago when we had that massive snow and then the stone grits that we needed to dig out river. Uh that's gone, uh there's not a lot of extra for. Supplies, materials, um all the weapons out, uh we even shaved seasonal hours, we've shaved, prepared, so these dump trucks break. You know, I'm not sure that there's enough money to keep them all running, so. Uh this isn't rosy, I mean, they're balanced, but um street funds. You know, we've got three hundred and fifty wood street lights there in the bird hill and a little part of town. They're out, they exceeded their useful life, they're gonna rot out and fall over. And eight years ago, we were supposed to be spending a hundred thousand dollar a year and every year it gets cut. So we're eight years into a. Those same three hundred and fifty poles that we we replaced one this last year that was lean and it didn't fall, but it was done. Uh we replaced it with that already as a system, but there's three hundred and fifty of those out there, that's a huge liability. Um but we'll see, uh we we use some instead of, we couldn't find a used dump truck, it was in this year's budget, in the twenty three one board. A used D O T, well, state has no money, so their stuff is literally garbage, that we don't want to buy that anymore. That used to be, we take their, you know, uh dump trucks that were. Used, kind of not pretty, but that worked for what we needed, um that's not available anymore, so we didn't get another dump truck, couldn't find a good used one. Uh we didn't do the salt shed because the maintenance guys found a local, a closer supplier, so we don't have to come out of Arizona anymore with it. We can actually get it out of Yakima, so they cut that out and they're using that money. This year to go get a computer controller set in our signals that are outdated, just like your home computer, Brad will tell you. You know, the technology gets outdated, we've got that kind of controllers in a couple of our signals. So we're using some of that money to fix that this year. Uh but it's it's slim, and the other thing that's coming down the pipe is we did that three light retrofit. And we've enjoyed that, I don't know what the date is on the poster. Um we did a dream with Bet R A that gave it the thirty thousand dollar a year credit. So we haven't been paying anything on the three light bill until just recently, we finally got enough lights and we're actually paying very couple thousand dollars for light bill for all those city lights for a whole year. Um we've got, not this budget cycle, but I think twenty twenty seven, twenty seven that ends, and so that'll be another thirty thousand dollar a year. Uh just to pay for the light bill, so there's things in the street fund that we'll need to look at. And that plays back in what councils already talked about, transportation benefit, that's very likely to cut up. Uh but what we've got in here is, I don't know, pass a resolution that wants kids to do the snow dance for snow days at the elementarys. But we'll get mine and it's it's. It's it's got thinner than normal.
Some of the other things that we looked at too is what did we have left in this budget cycle that we could use and and in this budget cycle? That we were needed, that we wanted to buy in this twenty five, twenty six biennium, so we were able to take some of the some of the budget that we had and and. Take care of equipment needs and things in that nature, so we didn't have to be able to mix up any of that. Do you want to add a part of it?
You could, you could imagine that, talking about streets and all stuff, that just what Ross was talking about, that impact that has. Every department deals with this, I mean, the biggest asset of the city is our personnel. And as population grows, you need more personnel to take care of business. I mean, the street side, obviously, you're gonna have more streets because more housing. So keeping the roads clear just for bombing range and forty fifth is, you know, the history of it, but sooner or later you're gonna have that more people, there are more loads. And the police department itself, as we get population, my percentage of cops per thousand goes down. Right, right now, we're at one, if you if you figure, we have eighteen five, we're at one point one eight officers per thousand, I dropped in my last report thing. It was at one point two three, I think my last report was, as population grows, you've gotta keep, we've gotta keep up on that. I think for every, I'll just talk about cops, I don't know everybody else's formulas, but I'm just talking in general. But with that comes equipment like Ross was talking about too, so. Anyway, I just wanted to add that too.
Yeah, we toured with the sixteenth and the eighth legislators this this afternoon, or this morning actually. And they were, they were impressed with the way that the city looks, the new growth, the new construction. And we were talking about some of the challenges that we have. And they said, well, what does it take to get over that, that that pump? And we've always talked about real talk, daytime power counts that is gonna attract the the commercial business. And just what I read this evening and what you've seen so far, we've made those strides as far as attracting the commercial business, but it's been a smaller version of it. Hasn't been a box store or a car lot or R V sales or, you know, the the big number, but. You know, it's, you can build a city, I've always said you can build a city, I've built it, but you can't maintain it. Uh we're doing the best we can, what we've got to work with, some people say, Mike say that we have a spinning problem, no, we don't. Uh, we're doing the best we can, what we've got to work with, some people say, Mike say that we have a spending problem, no, we don't have a spending problem. We have a growth problem with it is is, it's costing. It must be able to teach them how to be, you look at what a like sized city is. With the population and the number of employees we have at eighty five, what what's the, what's the standard? Somebody we had talked about, what is the standard size of employees in the city, our size?
Yeah, it's she, it's over a hundred, hundred and twenty five, hundred and thirty, I think, from what they have you see had on the average. Uh, for staff, that includes police, of course.
So you go back and look at those cities, and what do they have? They have a number of car lots, they have big block stores, they have all those cities, which gives them mobility that they have. So it's not, we're 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 spending too much, we don't, we don't have enough income in the general fund, the retail services.
So. Yeah, um. Speaking of income. Can you explain a little bit of the category you got here? Um. New Aldeja. Thirteen. So three ten is is.
Is taxed.
All taxed.
So that would be, that, yeah, that literally includes all your, uh, three ten to me. Uh, in the, in terms of bars, it is taxed, so it's uh, sales tax, utility tax. Gambling tax. Uh, and I think utility tax, property tax. So all of those um come in and that's what happens. So general fund is primarily serviced by tax.
Right, so but three twenty license and permit fees. It's it's projected going down, is that? Is that real, you?
That's building permits.
Building permits.
So, yeah, primarily building permits and uh the projection this year, so when I looked at this, um. Cause I did look at these, so in January, we had a very large one time. Uh, multi-family one come in, it's about two hundred and twelve thousand or so. So I really tried to take, remove those big ones from my projection as more of a one time thing. So when I'm projecting out, I think my projection was around four hundred, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is still quite a bit in building permits. Uh, but that's where that kind of comes from.
And so the intergovernmental, that's that's the tax, internal tax.
Um, let's see, three thirty, so that's gonna be state shared revenue, so that will be um. Like the city assistance, PUD privilege tax, um, any grants that we get. So that's like a three thirty, three, three thirty four, um. Like some of the Rixson School District, I know when they jump in and uh pay for a portion of like the school loans, that's where that comes, it's from another government.
In charge of visiting services.
Um, that is uh like the plan or beauty fees, so tied to building permits. But there, we have a plan or beauty, that's primarily what that is, and we have no engineering side, um, when it engineer. And then on the planning side.
And then three ninety, that's where twenty twenty one, twenty two, that was COVID helping.
That's right.
And so there's still something coming, it's COVID.
Oh, it's three nine seven was a transfer and, uh, yeah, so. Three nines are transfers, uh, the other big transfer that we do is from the PST funds. So all of we uh keep together everything that is PST related, it's all funded in the general fund. All the revenue goes to fund one oh five. And then every quarter we do a transfer, we take all the expenses that were associated with this PST. Um, whether it's the employee wages. And basically, anything that supports those three officers, we uh transfer that into the general.
Which without it.
Yeah. Yeah, that supports, that is supporting three police officers. Uh, now the code enforcement is a part time twenty hours. And then uh the executive um in the police station, executive assistant.
That's an ongoing tax that Ben County will continue to to happen as this reaching grows, it will all, it will continue to grow for our share of.
And the criminal justice side too, you know, there's. I think it brought up a city council OPD, you know. What's a doubling trip, I mean, year's gonna, it's going up and go, um, it's a lot of money. And it's things we have to pay, so Eric might give more details on the amount, but it's almost scary unless that one up. And impacting folks.
Yeah, so, okay, on page. Um, the top line is just the jail cost alone, you can look at those. Um, I projected out in twenty twenty four, it's gonna be about three hundred and seven thousand. I did talk to the Lakewood County, um, and we're um projecting about four hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, for the next biennium, and then I think it can go up. The next. Yeah, I think sixty, we're gonna split these out, um. And for the first time, the biennium. Uh, so you have, so under police, you have the potential services for district court and public defense. Um, before they were kind of combined under that district court and. I really wanted to monitor what the whole open B thing is, so I really uh split out public defense. Um, we have that new rule coming through where it says so many, um.
Case, the case load of the of the defense attorneys was reduced probably about half of what that business of state bar. Maybe uh, screen court.
So with that, that means that the county's gonna have to hire more attorneys, um, probably facilities and our costs are gonna drop. Right now, it's on the pulse. So, um, when I talked to.
Linda.
Linda at the county. Um. We kind of scaled it back originally, they were projecting about four hundred and seventy nine thousand for the biennium, just for um public defense. OPD, um, with those new rules in place.
That that would have required them at a at a full, full staff, be thirty five staff members. Uh, new facilities, uh, and that was a two year budget if it was spent a hundred percent. That's where it came up with the four seventy nine, and I knew it was high, Aaron and I both were inside, so I reached back out to Linda and. Got a little bit more breakdown and then I put Linda and Aaron together and. Uh, Linda was very, she said, I'm I'm not a lawyer, I don't give you advice, you know, it's a fine, but.
Because this is what we're budgeting in revenue, and then I took that number and kind of. Put it in the terms of.
Which was a considerable help in our challenge.
Yeah, so and then, um, not only that, but part of this again, um. Is being absorbed, so this is one of the costs, is the ratio of uh officers. So we have my team whole officer, three of them are PST. So that ratio, the three, uh, is about fifteen point eight percent is being covered by PST. So that was another thing to try to get this to work and to balance, um, it's getting so little PST dollars to cover these um growing costs. And that's, uh, again, like not in our control and not fun for us to pay for.
Uh, with the, just looking at page sixteen, okay, for the. Public services, district board and the public defense, looks like under the mayor's proposed. There is the public defense on there, but that's not added into the district for tools, or public defense not added in there normally?
Uh, it is, I think it's a formula error.
Okay, so that would actually be a five or six. Some six to. Right, okay. So higher than the projected, but less than the less, or higher than the projected for the biennium, but less than the requested.
Well, and then the requested, also, I didn't take into consideration that splitting that into PST as well. So PST has a point to some of that, and you know, you didn't see that other. Where was it, sorry, a lot of numbers we've had of, uh, but at the top, so page sixty one. Um, you see, every end of one will vibrate there. Um, that's the last three digits, so the top two are those new, two new lines for um. Court and public defense, um, and then I did jail, so I combined them in that one and then did jail. That's because my company wouldn't allow me to split them out. But right there, that kind of gives you the idea of what PST is, and that is where that transfer comes in.
There's a bridge asset increase as well. The number mentioned, potentially three thousand neighborhood tops also scheduled for that, do they have any, except for Jackie? Um, right now, we are absorbing how two hundred and fifty homes a year. So when I look at that, we're. Somewhere between ten and twenty years, building three thousand minimum homes. Uh, depending on interest rates, I mean, look at. How many homes were built in West Ridge in the last several years, twenty twenty one, we had this big huge spike, and then interest rates went way up. So housing dropped. We are seeing a lot more multi-family being built in the meeting. So that's raising that number up, so it depends on market conditions. Really, but I've seen about two fifteen over years about what our average.
Six, so how, just the number, is that rate of neighborhood tops included in your projection for revenues?
Um, somewhat, but not, uh. It's it's a combination of both.
Yeah. It's maybe a clean, very simplistic point of view, I look at. Thirteen point three million dollars for two years, right? And. Provide that by two for a year to get. Six point five gallons, something like that. And you say we have, currently how many neighborhoods in West Ridge, some five thousand?
Thirty six.
Six thousand closer to.
Fifty two hundred per one.
I mean, that was my guess. Number of something like twelve hundred thousand, twelve hundred bucks, right, uh, per per household, just in general, so. I look at that from a simplistic point of view and say, look, if we're getting two hundred and fifteen homes each year, we should be getting about. That number times that average tax contribution. In an increased revenue, I know it's incredibly. In that, well, I'm willing to be, it's a lot, it's a lot, but it's very small, and it's, you don't have many other taxes.
Single, single family, multifamily, and your property tax is limited to one percent. But look at everything, just get an example, salt, it's up a hundred percent.
Well, yeah, yeah, I get that, so. But I'm just trying to, trying to gauge. How, how much, what the rate of increase? Really will be, at the rate of, let's see, rate of deficiency. Will be between our future income and their current ways of taxing people. Versus our increasing expenses. Due to inflation and cost of.
I think one of the big problems we saw, honestly, in this last biennium is the inflation.
True.
So when we hit nine, you know, nine percent, five percent. Um, typically, when I'm forecasting a property tax, it's about three percent more a year. So that's what I think the existing plus the new, so kind of what you're talking about, so it's adding that new in. And then when we we get to that, we'll talk more about the property tax, but. It's really, yeah, it's about three percent, and then when you have the cost going up nine percent, five percent, it's like, that's not keeping up. And then, let's say growth stops, let's say we don't get any new homes, like it just flat out stops. So we're limited to one percent a year. So, and that's even with a normal inflation of three percent, that one percent is not keeping up. Uh, when it comes to uh property tax. Um, and what we mean by that, and so. And it's kind of a convoluted and difficult. Uh, thing to grasp, I think it's something that we all need to grasp in this room. So when we talk about that one percent increase, it's not a one percent increase to your property tax. It's a one percent increase to what we think collect in revenue. So if we collected a hundred dollars in revenue from everybody in this room, next year I can only collect a hundred and one dollars.
Even if the population goes up by another ten.
If it, no, it's. Existing, so let's say your home, uh, it's a hundred dollars this year. Next year, I'm only allowed to go up a hundred and one dollars, but all the homes increased in value, maybe they increased ten percent. Doesn't matter, I can still only collect a hundred and one dollars. So that's kind of where the gap is. And so, and that's what you'll see as we get into the discussion on how your levy rate um has actually declined over time. So I think right now our levy rate is about dollars. Um, we have a capacity to go to two ten, uh, but over time, it's just gonna continue to go down. Because as your homes gain more value, cause they're keeping up with inflation. The property tax you pay to the city, now I'm only thinking in terms of the city, this is not in terms of. The bond uh revenue or the school, this is what comes to the city. Um, I can only collect one percent. So that's where you get the decline, and that's, I think, part of the problem of keeping up with inflation, especially if growth stops.
One of the problems that mosquito control has found is. The assessments office is totally. And so the assess, we, it's, it's, they they can't do their assessment, and they use the. Really big state like G I S.
They know that, don't wear.
Yeah.
Use the kind of G I S servers to generate the list. And so have we really looked at? What we've been given, and we're just taking what they give us, correct?
Um, essentially, no, I don't know.
I mean, there, I mean, there, there are many, Eric, I mean. Because mosquito control, I mean, they had the hundred thousand dollar error. Several years ago, and and the county had to. Reissue funds at great expense to a bunch of people out in. Plymouth that got sucked into the. Mosquito control and then we had to reissue tax bills to another, to generate another hundred thousand people that. We had a hundred thousand dollars worth of assessment that was supposed to come in. Uh, their database is just hosed, and I'm just wondering if we actually hope that there.
I don't have staff.
Yeah.
Like, I don't have time. That's one of the the challenges, like I I'm like. Being on the best and just the audit and like everything else, like we're, you know, that's. One of the struggles we're up against, I don't know how I would take on. You know, a project like that at some time.
So it was, it was, when when we had our big, everybody started seeing their big bump and and their assess value when they got their new equipment. And I haven't heard anything from any of the other city managers or or the. And county administrator from our regional partners here of any abnormality and what they had seen in regards to. Proper reporting and selection. And Aaron would have heard something from from other peeps that are in finance, I think, so there was a, they love it.
I mean, the key comes down to is. Assessors were supposed to put a code on properties that would be. That that would go with the properties, as it hasn't got subdivided, so. And there's mosquito controlled uh code. The list that they send us as compared to the list that we generate by using a. A G I S mapping. Maybe all of their, thousands, this.
Richard, Eric and I spent, I don't know how long, with county. If they showed the police station being owned by the Alexanders. Uh, we own the field.
That we have the, the dog might seem, if they don't have things reported.
Yeah, well, it's recorded, right, they just got to enter whatever wrong, and so Eric and I spent, I don't know how many emails going back and forth. And they're like, no, you're wrong, like I'm telling you, the Alexanders don't own the police station, how to show them the needs and how to get that corrected, but. I don't know what, because it was after the tax stuff went out, so I don't know if the Alexanders got taxed from the police station and we didn't pay taxes on. Two hundred and sixty acres of Timothy Hay, I don't know.
When all of the, when all of the cities and the county was having trouble with. The gentleman who's an elected official down there, which he can do what he wants to do and tell everybody else to count them, is basically what he's done to us. We requested, uh, we needed to get things straightened out. Uh, and it was. Uh, and it was, it's still, it's quarterly now, isn't it?
Yes.
So, uh, yeah, we we have, we we called them in the garden, we asked the questions and expect answers, so. Maybe they're becoming a little bit more accountable, I don't know. Yeah, there was.
It's like, we we don't have the time. Yeah, it's something forever good to.
We can't, we can't be the cop. For all of these things, because we don't have personnel to dedicate that kind of time and then we're busy keeping the wheels on the line.
So so I redid my calculation. Understand that it could change, I mean, what type of problems being built, so. Just for a baseline, I don't know, based on some sort of reference point, that turns out to be, okay, two hundred fifteen homes a year. That could be something like two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in increased revenue. So tell me why that's wrong, just in front of.
I think so, uh, because I was just. Working on the property tax for this next year and I believe the new. The new property value was like eighty two million coming in, so kind of all based on. Value and I think that I had projected out about thirty two thousand additional coming.
Really?
So it's not a lot, I mean, cause.
So how income conversation we're gonna be at? Well, right, that's, I want to understand what our income. Predictions are before I start talking about. How else we can get more.
I just, I just think that what we're seeing going into the grasp with this stuff at our level, we're already the right. The power curve, that's what we're dealing with as far as personnel, equipment, everything across the board. And I get the analysis part, I'm just so you know, in our point of view. We're looking for help now.
So what I'd like to, what I'm, I'm just to Rossdale history. Literally, um, even decades, uh, even before I was on council. Is the idea that. You know, the city is. Constitutes, there 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 are people live here, they drive on roads, they drink water and produce sewage. And they require police, you know, uh, patrols. And so there's these services parks separate, right? It seems like, I mean, I understand that it seems like almost like with economies of scale. Uh, the price per resident. At some point should go down, but initially on a small town, it probably goes up. Like you you need a certain number. Patrolman on 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 call, whether you've got ten thousand people or twenty thousand. Uh, you know, there's a certain number of hours in the day. And so that might be an exception to that rule, but um. As far as uh. On on average, if you have a certain number of wells to provide water, if you have a certain number of streets to follow. You know, those increase with your population, and one would hope that you could come up with a. Some sort of formula. You know, that that taxes people or rooftops, let's just say. Um, at a rate. That keeps up with that growth, right? I mean, so whether you have fifteen thousand people or twenty thousand people. You know, the fact that you need another dump truck or another street sweeper or whatever. Gets put into this. Rate, this this rate model and this calculation. And then the the wild card versus inflation. So then you need to be able to also have an add for inflation. So you have like, if my family to Westbridge, it's gonna cost me, you know, this much per year. In services plus, you know, cost of living and then inflation. Which is a variable none of us can control. So I I wonder if we're just looking at inflation rates or are we? And any of cost of living and inflation rates for our deficit and revenue? Or do we have the? The the base tax and your income revenue calculation wrong? We're not taxing people, they're not paying.
I I said it was gonna help you with this, because there's, there's so many different things we can and can't do, we've got to do a lot of state requirements.
So I think. Where that used to come in is that cities have the authority to decide that their levy rate was going to be. And with the one percent cap, that was no longer the case. So it used to be, the city councils would say, this is what our levy rate is gonna be for the year. Instead, it didn't, it wasn't limited by one percent. And that's been in effect for.
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six, and so now for. Almost twenty years. That's just that deficit is getting bigger and bigger every year because that tax rate can't increase as as much as it needs to. To support the services in each city.
Even with the addition, so maybe I missed that, leaving it, even with the addition of more rooftops.
Because you're always calculating, you're always calculating the tax. Tops come in, so let's say we went and we wanted to just set a levy rate. Uh, we don't set a levy rate and that's what I talked about, the levy rate comes down. But when new rooftops come in, they get taxed at the new lower rate, so and then. So it'll be, it'll be the previous years, but they don't start at this and then incrementally go down. So it's always. Uh, they'll come in, uh, and they may have a four hundred thousand dollar home. And they'll pay the city roughly four hundred and forty two dollars. Um, but next year they'll only pay four hundred and forty six dollars and essentially if everybody's valued.
So what that tells me is that with that system, you're only allowed to have, if you have six thousand rooftops today, you're only allowed to have sixty more this year. Because that 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 would give you one percent, right?
Based on how much the amount of money you're collecting, so. Right, so then, so now we're only gonna collect a thousand dollars more, but now it's just divided amongst more people.
John, your home expenses are going up ten percent a year, you're getting one percent raise. It's been that way for the last twenty years, you're eventually gonna be broke and bankrupt. That's where we're at. No, it's, I mean, no, I mean, I am. Your cost of services continues to go up and you can only raise your property tax one percent. The city has no retail sales tax. So you have no way to balance, so your cost of services are going up faster than you can generate revenue based on the state's requirements. Of these cats, now they're gonna look at changing the one percent and possibly three percent. And but that, if they do, that's the internal thing that Stephanie was saying, we can go figure out where that needs to be, our mill rate. Three percent still may not get us there, but it's gonna be better than, well, run, but people say, well, that's gonna triple your property. It it's not, it's bad math. That's instead of one dollar more, you're gonna get three dollars more, that's not three hundred percent.
And and John, as as A W C looks at these issues, inflation is just one factor, but there are a lot of costs. For goods and services that are outstripped when inflation. There are, for example, collective bargaining. And there's one in this city that has to be adjusted. Those are costs that you really can't put into a specific formula. And the price of salt, what they're doing. Yep, it doubled in a very short period of time, so there's a lot of variables. That you can't, you know, tie to a a rather simple algorithm.
I think what you're talking about, Mary Protim. As well as an example tonight, it's the O P D, I would imagine we're gonna just double over, you know, buddy side tone, but but those things. We couldn't have predicted, I I had no idea about this coming my way, those are just one of many things that we do. Anyway, I just wanna say.
No, I I I get it, I'm I'm not trying to simplify the overall problems, I'm trying to break it down into bits. True, and I'd like to, what you think about the baseline and then add these other factors that we know exist. And and come up with, you know, a financial plan with all that. But I think that there is a baseline. That has to do with. How many rooftops do you have? Versus. You know, your your income rate.
John, you can't back end it. What we're allowed to do based based on the state law is is what we're what we're, what you need to do is better understand. The 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 stranglehold that we have on us in Olympia and the challenges that we have. With the costs, the goods and inflation and everything up.
Right, what I see is. It's impossible to grow. And stay financially what, is that not what we are looking at here?
If you just do residential, you will have a problem.
It's impossible to stay static and stay in one side.
And there is, there is avenues that the city council can take. To generate the needed revenue sources and those are the things that are going to be coming to you from staff, make those difficult decisions. If you choose not to make those decisions. Then it's up on it's on you.
Something that I think would also kind of be a a snag in what you're talking about. And correct me if I'm wrong, money folks here, because. I'm just dabbling. Um, when you have people that are living in different sized lots as well. You're gonna have people that live in bigger lots that are going to have smaller numbers of people, but. They're going to have so much more street that's attached to them, they're going to be paying also less. Per mileage by tax. So if you have bigger lots, you're going to have that less money coming in, even though you've got more. Services being used, streets, also talking about pipes going for water, for sewage. And then if we have an aging population, we have to be concerned with if there is um. Uh, the folks that have the. Oh gosh, what's it called, where you can say, hey, I am on a fixed income, I can't pay for taxes, yeah, the low income. They, yeah, where you can't. Get more than a certain amount of taxes from them, even though the rates may be going up for everybody else. So I think that might be a concern, and honestly, what it really comes down to is, we need retail. And we need to figure out how to get it here, and I know that staff could bust in your butts to try and get it here.
And we've seen a lot of retail.
Yeah, yeah.
Prior decade, here the last four years, there was very little commercial going on at all.
Absolutely.
In the last four years, you've seen Paradise Business District blow up, you've seen Belmont starting to kick off and go. You've seen different commercial developments, even on lobbying things, you've seen even the the church there is adding a big huge addition on. There's, there's all sorts of commercials starting to happen, but the problem is, is it's a gas. It's a bank.
It's not like, uh, it's not a.
Sell high dollar cars and we're gonna collect a high dollar tax.
And that's obviously how capital is able to go from being as small as they were to. Having as much money as, well, I don't know if they still have it, but when they were getting so much bigger when it came to their budget, because they included those, but. We have to look at what the residents here are asking for, they don't want to have. So it's a matter of, we have to have that balance. What's gonna give, what's gonna take?
How controlled does the city council have for the ability to generate revenue?
You can make it, we can review our rules, you know. And make it as easy as possible for businesses to locate in Westbridge. But that's what we can do.
Do you have businesses come here that the citizens don't partake? The contumbrance, well, never allow this is here eight months and they're dead, they're done.
And look at how many lots we have that are commercial and um, industrial that aren't built on. That people are just sitting on, those lots. What happens with those? Do we have a way to say, hey, after X amount of years? You gotta build on it.
But I don't think there's gonna be a silver bullet that solves the problem.
Or they don't.
And you've got a situation where we're. Where we are growing. We're actually growing. Per population base, we're growing probably the most out of all of the tri-cities. We're experiencing that growing pain a lot more than others. And it is a bit of a growing pain because it's mostly residential. But the good news is, is that we're seeing a lot of. Rooftops coming in with multi-family, so that adds an exponential amount of rooftops compared to a. Single family on a large lot, so that's adding a lot more rooftops within a quarter mile, which is what. So we're seeing a lot of that growth happening, which is, I think, the reason why you're seeing some of these commercials developments happen. But we're in that phase of. We're still not quite there yet. We're seeing just the initial phases where you get the C store and the coffee shop and things like that. But we're not quite there yet to get the big box store or the or the car dealership or R B dealership. We're just, just a little way, and so there's that growing pain, the big box, you know, now. The the residents have to put the bill and cover the cost to run a city. While it's growing, and if you don't grow, you're not definitely. So really what drives it isn't the zoning codes and making it harder, easier for. They're not looking at as much as they are, how many cars are driving in front of this lot? How many rooftops are within a quarter? Half a month. That is their driving factor, they don't care what the regulations say. If the numbers work.
So you must have studied like how, what those numbers need to be for business like. Dairy Queen or a shoe store to uh, decide to locate in a new up and coming town. So what is the, what's the threshold? I remember I looked at this twenty years ago or specifically Dairy Queen. Cause I thought Tom should be putting his dairy queen next to the bomb, or he just starts that much. And I looked into it myself and uh, at the time, twenty years ago. Uh, twenty five thousand population and I can't remember the car campus section. Before they would franchise you a Dairy Queen in a town. Um, I I lived through this in Richland, but we got to McDonald's, first McDonald's actually put us on the map. We got, we 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 seeded about twenty, twenty, twenty two mil, twenty two, twenty two thousand people. What is the number today? Is it about, do we know what we have to grow to? What should we be anticipating? For when one of these franchise businesses can make a decision based on national statistics to come in.
Thursday, it's not that simple.
Exactly, okay, we went down to Vegas to the uh. The retailer and grocery store conference trying to recruit them to come up here. We didn't go this year because we didn't have any new story to tell, but. We would sat down with this auto parts. I was, I named him, call him out. Um, because Rossell and I went down, sat down and said, hey, we have all of this growth, all of this development, we have property that we can sell. To locate an auto parts store because the closest one is far away from us. And so everyone has to drive all the way into Richmond to go to the auto parts store to get any of their parts to come back.
And not even a convenient part, which.
No. And he looks at it and he goes. Yep, you need all of the numbers. But. Everybody in the city is going to whatever it's in store. And so we don't need to build another one because you're still, you're still gonna come to our store where it's at big, but if. O'Reilly's, say chef, if O'Reilly's.
It is be chef.
If O'Reilly's goes out there. By George, we're gonna be right next to it. So. I wanted to just, I my my thing, my.
We don't buy automobiles anymore.
Let's use that analogy on coffee shop. You get a Rossell or whatever that one was down the corner, okay, then you get swings, so now you've got Dutch food. So that's the competition, spirit of competition.
Now, we aren't getting tire kickers, we always have tire kickers on our property side here, I talked to Rob and he's selling me out, we've got some people that are really interested, I've got. And I met with a group a couple of weeks ago that does. Large commercial developments. And they were pretty hot on Westbridge one. But. Even then, I mean, the contracts that we signed with the properties out for three years. So it's not going to fix this next biennial's budget, it's not gonna fix probably even the one after that. It won't be until four or five years and it'll actually start seeing the benefits if we're able to get. Ben R A to show up, which we've done.
That took seven years.
Yeah, seven years, seven years to get them to come. They're gonna open doors within this biennial. I'm really hopeful that we'll start seeing some stuff come in and some revenues come from that. But. There's, it just takes time.
They'll piggyback, you ask about McDonald's, the murder game, Home Depot, Target, they all cannot look. Located at Queensgate because they'll get all Westbridge and drive there and all the southward, so to meet their numbers. At Home Depot, we locked because we have a staff member that doesn't work here, when they came knocking, said we weren't interested in big box store. They never pursued it any further. So there's been missed opportunities and that's why Queensgate. Take it off, because they know they can cherry pick from here, because people will drive, drive to Autozone in Richland, they'll drive to Walmart. So that's tough and there those type, anything that goes to Queensgate is not low. And there, those type, anything that goes to Queensgate is not locating anywhere closer than where we are here. So that's why the focus goes back to plan that there is working with Berg on. Is putting commercial on Van Geest and out on the ranch because that meets those radiuses that they'll look for, doesn't pick off. That's far enough away from uh, it's been grocery stores, different.
Every mile or whatever radius depends on this, this store. That we're not gonna locate anywhere because you don't wanna poach from uh.
The drive distance to it. So, so Richland is poaching.
Yeah. So you can only hope Richland goes up quick. Richland actually, they've got a lot of, a lot of potential. You look at the other cities. Now, she, you can talk to the city seventy about growth projections. But Richland and West Richland are the fastest growing cities in Benton County area. Uh, analytics actually on a distribution analysis, they're losing ground compared to Richland and West Richardson. So there's, we're growing. And I, I believe the big stores, I'm sure you've noticed that, but it's gonna take, and we're not to twenty-five thousand yet. So it's gonna take a little bit.
It's coming.
And then once, so once we do approach that, then they'll start.
Yeah, John, we used to have to beg people to talk to them, to come tell them about West Richardson to get businesses interested. They're not calling it. And having Rob, our broker, help with that, it's still in there. Um, if interest rates were still cheap, I think you'd see even more growth out here, but it's coming.
And so while, while I appreciate the conversation of what we need and we all agree it's. More retail sales tax to boost the general, boost the general fund. It's not happening today. What I wanna do is, is get back to this document right here. And then fulfill any more questions anybody may have in regards to where we're at. And then uh, really, it's gonna be in the hand, we're gonna be bringing things to the council that they can make decisions on examining back in uh. Twenty-six and future biennial.
So the other thing, we gave you the doom and gloom on streets, on this continued parks, got it. So we went and did all those plans. We have a park plan, you have an own end plan, you have level service that you all adopted. And the last biennial, you didn't fund any. Well, I can't say you didn't fund any. You funded a body and make it a part-time person, it's point six full-time. That plan said we needed seven bodies to be even with the parts you got.
We have more parks on the variety.
And you got an agreement for another five acres, which is another body. So the two bodies last year got cut, the few bodies that were asked for this year are cut. Um, deferred maintenance, three point two million. The plan was to do six hundred thousand every biennial. Budgeted two hundred thousand, my staff, the idea was, let's see what you can do with two hundred thousand. He worked with nonprofits, he worked with volunteers and spent, and did two hundred thousand dollars. We actually got a lot of comments and great feedback. It's all cut. So there's no deferred maintenance. So the two hundred thousand you put in, I bet you with inflation, we're worse off than the three-two we had. Um, so bodies, equipment, everything's there. We're supposed to be doing a needs assessment, doing an addition, to be forming a parks department. To rather just mow and grass, that's all cut. Twenty-twenty-seven, we're supposed to have a director and, and take that and start focusing on a rec program. We can't even make it what we got. And so you will see a level of service here. We, seasonal's been cut. Hours, um, there's no new bodies, supplies are cut. No deferred maintenance, no equipment. I mean, some of this stuff that they need to do, gone. I mean, we, last budget cycle, we cut out the needs analysis and doing a small addition, house, park staff. Shop to have, that, that's all been cut. At some point, the shop we're using at the raceway to store park equipment, I won't be able to use. I don't know where that park equipment's gonna go. Sit out in the weather. So um, your parks, you're not funding what you said you're gonna do. We've already cut new development standards in half of what new development has to put in, but you're not funding what you got. And so. Okay, you gotta pass the last budget cycle, this one, if the way it's going, we're gonna, I'll bring it back to you and make you make the hard decision with parks. Cause it's not fair to our staff to decide. To try to maintain this level of service that you've said, that you're not funding. We thought a great game and all this commission statement and all these little things, John funded it. So um, and they're killing themselves trying to do it. They say, I'll do this, but we use nonprofit, these guys are coming in that are exempt, they're coming on the weekends to do stuff with volunteers. And try to clean up our parks, pick up trash, fix broken benches, paint the pavilion. It, it's, it's not gonna be able, it's not sustainable. And somebody said, okay, we'll close the little park, who Anna states, a little remnant that we got. Okay, that's ten thousand square foot. A body is five acres. You're gonna close Skydive Park, that's one lot. So you're, you're four short now. We're gonna close twenty acres apart. That's a lot of parks. So again, that's a tough one. That's one lot discussion, levy lid. People love their parks, they love their trail. You know, uh, not fair to have to go over and build them if they're just gonna fall apart. You know, so that's gonna be a tough one, but it's, that one's, there's. They got, got it. I don't know anywhere else to, to do it because when it comes down to maintaining, please, or just, I mean. Stephanie Brad, they're one person, you know, filling in. Hard to get that department, yeah, you know.
Which we did anyway.
Well, they're down to high, it's just high, me, myself, they, they, we had to cut. But it, it's at that point, so. You have that revenue that you have control of the general fund. Looks like it's a hundred and twenty million. What we're talking about is thirty-five million dollars of need, bare needs, that we cut thirteen million out, down to twenty-five. That's a huge cut, you cut thirty-five percent out of the general fund to balance it. And we've been doing that for a number of years. It's not sustainable. You know, people talk about COVID and all that, but that, the one good thing is people stay at home and box stuff on Amazon, our retail sales. We got our, that whole health. That, that state's business is gone. The state has a problem with their balance in their budget. So it's the first thing the state's gonna do, they're gonna look at the shared revenue. Cities, they're gonna make their problem our problem. So we're gonna have some tough decisions. Again, we've already talked about levy lid, looking at the mill rate. And we've been successful when we go out and tell the residents what it's for. You go tell them, we wanna maintain this level of service of parks. We want office, we like our safety. We don't wanna get out of a cyber attack. We need to get IT. I think people will vote for that, but you gotta be sure they'll put the numbers out there. And yes, it will cost them more on their property taxes. Um, but they need to look at what's in their property tax and the small piece that comes in the city. Most of that's going to schools. And other stuff, the library they voted for, the police station they voted for. Or if they don't, then let us know. Be part of the discussion to let us know what we're gonna change in the parks.
I'll tell you, from my point of view, the most concerning thing this year was, obviously, the revenue coming in, they didn't, didn't cover the stuff. And this, like, in my opinion, I can't remember a crime increase in two thousand twenty-three ever seen in my history of being in this department. With my reserve time, they're twenty-eight years. I've never seen a crime increase like we had in twenty-three. And this, and then to find out everything I requested, try to get these forward moving, cut, ouch. Kay, you had your, uh, sorry.
Um, I was wondering, kind of going back a little bit, we were talking about the, the gas tax. And is that on the Street Funds One-O-One page on page twenty? So where is that? Cause I'm looking at taxes total for three-ten.
Yep.
And that's not even two hundred thousand. You were saying four hundred and forty thousand?
Uh, well, it's state share, there's a, so it might be in the three thirty, there's a number of.
The intergovernmental is pretty high.
Yeah, and I think that's where it is because it's considered a state share.
Is there a way to do this? Split between that, is that in the back or is that?
Ten to ten.
Okay. Um, so then I was also wondering on page twenty-two, I'm looking at the forecast for the next two biennium. Uh, and that just as similar there, is it supposed to be?
Oh, no, it's.
Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand or it's like three hundred and fifty-eight dollars? For the next two biennium, for the whole expenditures.
Oh, that's the park impact phase?
Yeah.
Uh, park impact is uh, very project based. We don't have any projects out that far.
Okay.
That's money you charge new development to go build more park capacity.
For the expenditures portion, I see it going from the repose twenty-five, twenty-six and six hundred and seventy-eight thousand plus. To the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, eight, two hundred and fifty dollars.
So that is exactly, so these are projects in here, so they're one-time projects. And so it's like, I think this was the uh, portion of the Alexander.
So, so you've got four hundred and forty thousand dollars you're gonna pay the Alexanders when they build a million and a half park and, and Watermark.
And so that's the thing here, but I don't have any other money at this point or projects to spend this money on.
I, I can bring you the list, we've already talked about it. But there's not a lot of money in the park because your new development's building the parks, the heights are in mountain, you're gonna see Watermark build it, so there's not a lot of revenue coming in.
Right.
Um, and so that capital project's the next one. Um.
The revenue looks like it's coming in, it's just the.
It's been pushed out, pushed out. And I, I can give you the, the forecast, man, the expenditure, you're right, but it's probably two biennium doubt. And it's redevelopment of, of uh, South Island's park. But it only uses a portion of capital because you can't use it to fix deferred maintenance. That has four hundred and forty, I think, is what we're planning, but you gotta come up with six hundred and sixty of general.
So the two hundred and fifty-eight dollars is prob, uh, most likely um. Like bank fees, like to keep. Yeah, so there's, there's no capital projects plugged into that. So that's so.
I, I can bring that spreadsheet, Kay.
Yeah.
Biennium department is struggling to keep up, put this together. Cutting thirteen million out of the thirty-five million up was not, I mean, been here twenty-five years, this is probably the sheer balance. Because there wasn't a lot of love. Um. We're, we're cutting training, we're cutting going to conferences, we did go to I A C C, we're looking at cuts this year we can do. So there's more money to roll over to next year, so um. But I can get you the one of four, but again, that's building new parks that we don't have money in.
Right.
What we already got.
Right.
And if we don't spend it, then we give it back. And that's another accounting problem that we'll find out. Were you planning it ten years ago?
Okay, so that's important, so.
And if we don't spend it in the ten years, then.
We enter it back to um.
Who paid it? So you gotta go back and figure out.
We can't, I don't know if it's who paid it or the land or other.
We don't wanna get in a position to have to go figure out who can get refund money through ten years.
We haven't done it yet.
Hey, is there, is there a different model that cities use for funding their parks and initiating new ones? Instead of requiring developers to pay a fee or produce land, I mean, maybe it's, maybe we need them not. Maybe we just need to make them pay a fee, or is there something else?
Well, that's the other thing, John, it's a developer's supply research to make. So that's what a council is used to do. But you're supposed to charge a ten thousand dollars house, but you said, no, we're gonna charge thirteen hundred. And so we've done that for a number of years, and that's why you've got a number of parks that aren't built, that were promised to residents. It finally got fixed. You're seeing it fixed with the new development, building what they're supposed to. But that doesn't generate any revenue to go.
And that's even based on a cutback level of service. Because when we went through the parks plan, they had this level of service that was set here and back to review. We cut it down because we knew we couldn't man the maintenance, take care of the maintenance. So that was dropped down and so was the level of service dropped down. Where you're not even able to meet that requirement. I mean, I think consultant come in and do the big analysis as far as what you should be doing. It's like, well, you guys are doing a lot, little bit of resources you have.
In the past, council has not wanted to charge developers what they should to be to meet the level of service standard as far as for parks.
Well, but that's still a bill of more parks.
I know. But I mean, that's a different problem.
Why this is completely different. And so the maintenance, in order to be able to maintain what's. That's been done in other jurisdictions with levies or some.
Retail sales tax, they can fund that on a general fund.
There's multiple ways to take care of it. But right now, we're all just sucking this general fund dry.
Again, they say parking racks, westerns and the number, yes, there's odd rec programs.
Oh, that's because we're barely a town.
You're a real city. There should be more amenities and there should be more here, but the revenue's not there to support it.
Can we reduce the requirements for acreage of parks for housing?
I didn't have. Raise, raise the beat of mass where it should be now.
And then, does that feel right or do you think we need to cover it?
It really. John, you're loaded question, I know where you're going, um. If we tie it anymore, you will not get parks, you will have no parks, and you will never get back those areas and open spaces, which make West Richardson, West Richardson. So I'd say you need to look at it, you need to find the revenue to maintain your parks and the level of service and quality, like people enjoy.
When we updated the parks plan, a lot of people have lived over on Collins Road and in that area, outward, the. The subdivision was built and all of that Belmont area, Paradise area got built. They managed to, where's our park? We don't have a park. And it was because they all paid the thirteen hundred bucks, but it wasn't enough to cover the cost of building the park.
And they're still doing the stuff they promised people twenty years ago.
Although I will say with what you're saying, where, you know, we would lose that land, West Richland wouldn't be the West Richland we know. And um, it wouldn't be at the level that we expect. But the problem is, their reality is unfortunately that we can't continue to be the West Richland we know. Unless we change significantly. I'm not saying nothing we need to do, but just like what Mayor Gary's saying. We as council are gonna have to make some really hard decisions with this budget, harder than it was last time. And what do we wanna give? What aspect in West Richland do we want to? Sacrifice in order to be able to survive.
Survive, keyword.
Yeah, cause it's not even thriving, it's survive at this point, based off of the numbers that we're looking at.
Well, it's something, prime rates, well, two thousand twenty-three, it slips more.
Yeah.
I didn't think it's been said in city council before, if time keeps going up, that's really bad for cities, it's twice as hard to get it back.
And people aren't gonna wanna live here.
But Kay, it's easy this year, everything's cut, there's nothing in there.
Right.
Everything that was asked for was cut.
Right.
And so.
So that's why I'm asking about two things. Our perceived projection of breaking the future. And right now, I'm always focusing on parks and asking about what we are requiring the developers to set aside for park management. And our policy, do we have to build a park immediately? We've said within ten years. Can we have them reserve the land? And if we think there's a good chance of, of, of like, of, of boost in revenue. Because in ten years or eight years, we're gonna have twenty-five thousand people and we're gonna start getting these. Re, these revenue sources pop up in the form of retail sales. Um, and then we take that money, which is better reserved and make those parks a reality. So that we, you know, I mean, I don't wanna lose land, cause Ross, you're right, if you don't set aside the land at some point, you'll never get it back. And I'm gonna tear down houses to get parts. I'm just spitballing.
Well, John, that's, that's, that's good conversation to have, but we're here for. You know, it's all. That's fine, that's, that's something for the future.
Yeah.
What we need to do, Jay, is figure out what we're gonna do in the next, this biennial and the next one. And, but yeah, we'll open everything up for conversation, but. We need revenue sources, we're gonna bring you options and we're gonna let you make the tough decisions. If you wanna make tough decisions, do what we need to do to get back on track. You'll make those decisions for the best interest of the community, regardless of what your tax payers. Or are you gonna get a Christmas card or not? Bottom line is, you can keep the door open, you can turn out the lights and it will.
I'm, I'm hoping that in this, we're also looking at the fact that BF Pod has that grant navigator that is more than just a navigator. But is actually going to help work with different municipalities to get these grants that are out there. Cause they're not just going to say, okay, these are available, they're actually, from what it sounds like, our grant person is going to assist the municipalities. From what it sounds like, our grant person is going to assist the municipalities and do some of that labor that. We've been performing, I mean, I say we, but. We have the folks that are here at the table.
I don't know, there's been no grant that's gonna come to fix the per diemist in a park.
Right, but there are so many out there that.
We get, we get all the. Oh, N O F O's or whatever, we get them all, most of them don't apply. I mean.
And, and then you gotta manage.
One time, like, I'm seeing a bunch of day sailors around there. The situation is that your core group of people that are gonna administer that are paid out of the general fund. So you're saying, let's get more grants so we can build more things or do more things, but then you have more management of that. And that's what we're already facing, the finance, finance is, is funded through the general. You know, clerk is funded to the general fund, more people for things, it's IT, but general, more people is HR, general fund. So, sure, it might be like a water project, that's where we're at, you know, with our water fund or sewer fund, they're, they're doing fine. But you still have people that do central services that are funded out of that general fund that doesn't have money to expand those departments. So you're adding more.
Good point, there's, there's no silver bullet that's some salt, but there are some small. Low caliber shells we can attempt. One thing I would suggest, we, we, I mean, if we, when I buy a car out of state. Revenue comes here, so we should be reaching down with the Hermestine Motor Dealers and see if we can get a. A motor, you know, them to come up here. And try and promote their sales, and have delivered them. And, you know, those, that, that, that gives us an opportunity for big ticket sales in. West Ridge, the other option is to request, I believe the dealers. You can ask the dealers to deliver here, even if he buys in Pasco. Take, take delivery in West Ridge, that's something we can promote within our city as, as an option to. To bring some revenue to the city, but even with sales tax, we only get, what, less than one percent? So it's not, it's not.
I, I don't think it works that way, cause we've tried that with vehicles, we bought the trucks for the thing that come out of, uh. Long here, whatever. So you want me to buy out a state vehicle? Right, it's in Washington, but he was saying, oh, have them deliver here so you could think, no, you pay the, the sale, the point of sale, it's still there.
Oh.
And then I'm paying a delivery fee to bring it here.
Well, then, then when you come up and get your title, you pay the state sales tax.
But you're saying out of state, out of state, it comes.
It comes here.
But we, we do state bid, so I would have to, oh, man.
So, I mean, that, that's one, that's one way to even look at it, if the ticket sales get applied here. The, and, and promote out of state.
So I hear. Somebody's gotta go down there and solicit, that deals up, even if it's no deal.
So years and years ago, but many decades ago, I remember hearing about other states and cities where they would have. Incentives for big businesses, you know, destination locations, Mall of America type place, to come and locate in their backyard, and then. You know, a lot of those, a lot of these, I remember vaguely in the southeast where somehow the state or the municipality, you know, swung a deal. Put taxes, I don't know if that's illegal or not here, but you know, they, 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 they would say, hey, we'll, we'll grant you twenty acres, cause we've got all this wildland. Um, and you won't have to pay taxes for, you know, ten years or something, and it wasn't incentive to get somebody to do big business and you're back here. Is there anything like that? Is that illegal in Washington State? I mean, can we, we have to do that?
Getting the public fund.
What if, what if you show the return on investment?
It is illegal.
It is illegal, okay.
I'm getting a public fund, I, I would love to be able to do that, that's the thing.
We're just asking, what can, what incentives can you have to locate here?
That's what I'm asking.
The state, the state level, they can do it, but local, we can't, no.
If we talk to us, your permit really matters. Who do we talk to in the state? That if the state can do that, we'll get at least square miles of land.
John, they'll only talk to you if you have a burden, yeah.
Where's our I T A? Destination location, right, I mean, places that people want to drive to, to get. It, it, it doesn't have to have your, your, uh, population, and you don't have to have the, the roads going down, every time you. We miss the topic, yeah, for the same reason, you know, the population is.
It's D and R, the deal.
No, I mean, but I think, I think the only, we're a minority community, the only way we're gonna. Want is property tax, we're gonna get a levy, let, so we're gonna put levy, let. We should, as I said before, queue it up with a max. Commitment of our max increase levy, levy rate. So that, right now, we, we are limited at one percent. You know, we would, we would commit and get a higher levy, or we don't have to apply the full levy that. That one year, which would jack everybody's assessment up. But phase in as a three percent type of. Or something of that nature, which is what, uh, A W C was.
Do that multi-family tax exemption, where you come in and have a purge, bad form, property tax. But I have not seen that available for commercial.
And A W C, Richard, um, yes, they are pushing that issue again this year.
No, no, but that's to overcome the one percent, what I'm saying is that if we did bring our levy full up to. Two forty. Okay, two ten, then, then we would, we set, we as a council set the rate. And the rating we would set could be no more than, you know, uh, a pull up of the three percent. But we would still have additional, uh. Water, we, we wouldn't have to apply the entire rate, that way we don't have to come back to the voters year to year. We limit ourselves in the proposition, I don't know exactly how to write the words, but.
Here's some flexibility with the levy, let, I know that you can do a single year, you can do multi-year, uh, there are some options. With regard to any type of. So that would be something we should discuss at that time.
So, the, the first thing that's gonna come to you, uh, is the conversation on lift. And it's gonna be sooner than later, soon as Aaron can have a couple of nights to sleep because of all of her staff time and. These guys have been working nights, weekends, to try to get us to a right date. Uh, and so that's, that's our first step that we're gonna come back to, because that is gonna give us, if we are successful at the lift. We would see that in twenty six. And I'm looking for something sooner than later, for an avenue of relief. And then we can work on other things as we move forward, Ross is gonna put together, and you know, his, his band aid that he's got. It's been ripped off, I'm still bleeding of, of the parks and what, you know, what, what kind of things we might take a look at there to, uh. We're obviously gonna reduce level of service in a lot of different areas in the street side and so on and so forth, but, uh. That's the first thing that's gonna come back to you, and we got other things that are in the pipe too, but that's, that's the rest is one person. And, uh, staff come to with options or suggestions and making time. And we agree that that's the next step?
Well, I'm curious to know if our general population is comfortable. I, I almost think this is like a blue ribbon council thing. Pick somebody from each neighborhood, have them join in a discussion on this, because. I struggle personally with wondering if our citizens would rather see. Those few extreme bombing range park closed, or if they'd like to see their, uh, tax rates go up.
Right, I mean, I, I just don't, you know, when you look at, when you look at how you put something like that in it, on a. On a ballot, you've got your voters' path, looks almost like a pro and a con, if, if we don't do this, this is what's gonna happen.
Right, I know, that's why I'm asking, would they, which, what is their, what is the choice of the population, I guess I have. All I've heard is everybody, and I'm sure you probably read the same from the people you talk to, they said. Tax rates are incredibly high, those who are on fixed income are in especially tight spot, um, you know. And they can, people can't afford to buy, and they're making, literally making decisions on whether to buy groceries or gas, and. And that's not everybody in West Richland, and then we've got a lot of affluent people in West Richland as well, we don't struggle with that, but. But those people, I have to ask, do they really care? I mean, is it really an issue, is it a priority for them? To have, let me be extreme, bombing range park, park, I would mostly bomb, but nevertheless. I, that I'm trying to get a point across, like, what are their feelings about, do they really demand? These parks, uh, is that really higher than important, is that important enough for them to want to pay for?
It's not just a park or two or three parks, I would explain, it's so much deeper than a park or two or not, I see.
I, I, I understand, I'm trying to make it simple so I can say.
Those, those are decisions, these are decisions that the council will have to make, whether they wanna move forward with it, put on a ballot and let people decide. Uh, if you go through the dog and pony show that we've done multiple times with park districts, with cannabis. Whatever the case may be, everybody's gonna have different opinions, it's, it's not about a small, blue ribbon group. It's about, this is, we're bleeding, and we almost bled out, so you guys make the decision if. You wanna do this, and if you don't.
And you decide to go for levy, it doesn't, it doesn't, your vote results in when you decide.
Always to die, the, uh, our district, as you may recall, made a levy, lid, lid, EMS about two years ago. Has, uh, very, we sound very strong support, emergency services, these are the things that our citizens care. And services that the cities provide, being public safety, being, uh, being able to get your permits on time. They will vote for us, they will vote for it. If we package it, if we sell it correctly, because if we don't get a successful mode on. The city is going to decline, there is no way to stop, the city will decline, and I don't think there's a single resident. Who wants to see their city decline in the level of service or quality of life, but that's the bottom line. So that's the choice that will be made, but I firmly believe we'll have others.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree, but I believe we need to package it well.
Absolutely.
You don't need to, you don't need to.
So look at, look at the.
Station of the police station, it makes any general fund.
We restrict ourselves to volume. Works are general money, money, and rich and rough, parks and police and police, you know, those are the things that we talk about. You know, it's an education process.
But we don't need to, 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 uh, oh, no, that's the, those are the areas we're doing, but it's also the I T. It's the clerk's office, it's the front, front desk, there's more to it than that.
It's the backbone, the support group, and all of the other departments that is, it's.
That's what you will see in the near future, I still think we need to reach out to Hermestine.
If you talk with your state legislature, wave your state, state legislature. Tell them that you want to have council have more flexibility with developing revenues. The three percent property tax limit is coming up again, it was an arbitrary decision made back in two thousand six, it said it at one percent. Because prior to that, it was adjustable, uh, but we're looking for, A W C is supporting. A council manic decision with regard to, it's also supported by fire commissioners across the state, it's supported by the fire chiefs across the state. I don't know where Waspex stands, but, um, it will provide council, provide us the ability to make decisions. And if we don't, just have the rate, you can lower it too, if revenue increases with sales now, right now, we don't have that. So I recommend that if you have the opportunity to talk with your state, to support it, last year was hard because it was an election year. Not an election year this year.
And we've got six representatives.
Yeah, not three, six.
So, anything else? Well, thank you, I appreciate the input, discussion, uh, let's see what we can do to, uh, take the next steps to, uh. Feel up to twenty six, and we'll go from there.